62 Grand Wall Road. First thing I want to say, it's just, as you can see from the residents, it's not really fair that a project upsets so many different people and it's just not fair. You guys are appointed by Mayor Koch to do a job, to approve projects that make sense. This project makes absolutely no sense, okay, and people come up here and they speak because they think they can come up here and say something that makes sense to a board who will listen to stuff that makes sense, but nothing does make sense, okay? I mean, bottom line is, there's eight units there already. It doesn't make sense to destroy eight units to build 12 units. That's about maybe the most townhouses that can go there. It would make sense for the developer to sell those two families to someone else who will fix those two, eight units will have eight new units that will be fixed up in good condition and maybe have the city buy that other land in the corner for some open space which is, you know, needed so we don't have all this craziness. I mean, you know, it should be withdrawn, it should be gone, go to planning like a normal project. I mean, it's a slap in the face saying they want to go 40B. It's just not right. So, the bottom line is, like I said, Mayor Koch has appointed all the people up here and if this project is approved, it means that Mayor Koch is for this kind of development which the neighbors and the residents are obviously not for. So, it's up to you guys to basically just say no to this. I mean, I would, there's no reason to wait even two weeks. Give them an opportunity to say, hey, would you like to withdraw this without prejudice? Yes, he would like to withdraw without prejudice and he can come back at another time and let all these neighbors go home and not have to come back here in two weeks again because personally, this is actually a disgrace, it's a mockery of the system and this cannot continue, okay? It has to stop. Let's look at Warren Ave was when the bad development stopped in Quincy, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else?
Do you need Damon Atthis?
Yes.
Yes, Janet DiGiulio, 38 Standish Avenue, Wallaston. I haven't heard one good thing that's going to help our neighborhood be better and more productive and less traffic. It seems to me that when somebody's going to impact a neighborhood, they would want to say, for the neighborhood as a whole, this is going to be important and it's going to improve the way of life that our neighborhood has. Unfortunately, I think it has nothing to do with helping us as neighbors. It is helping perhaps more housing than is someone and many people pointing out, there is wonderful housing happening in terms of affordable housing, low-end housing, high-end housing. So, to add this piece to our neighborhood makes no sense to me and maybe some of the neighbors as well. So, I'd like to know, and maybe we can find that out next time, how is it going to help our neighborhood be a better neighborhood and stay as a productive neighborhood? Thank you.
Yeah, you're having an email here?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna take that out.
Okay.
Thanks. Anyone else? I have a letter here. Karen Yee, 37 Newton Street. And it goes on and on and on that she just don't want this project. What they could do for them, they'll shield. Anyone else? Last call. Call is part of the hearing close. Guys, you got new plans tonight, you really should look at them before you vote. I think it's just fair to the applicant to try to look at those in two minutes and vote while people are trying to talk. I was trying to look for myself. I have a question. I have a motion to continue this for two weeks and the only thing that's going to be done is to vote on it.
Mr. Chairman, regarding case number Z-17-38 Warren Place LLC, where company has a premise to develop a traditional-style building containing 32 rental units?
Fifteen.
Yes.
Including 10, which is eight rent-restricted units, and 38 parking spaces which are now 40. On the premises numbered 54 Warren Ave, 60 to 62 Warren Ave, 118 to 120 Old Colony Avenue in Quincy, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the hearing until June 13th of 2017.
That'll be the first thing on the agenda. That second?
Second.
On the motion, CNN on favor?
Aye.
Close. Come on. Here's the latest one that I got. When they say new one, this is a revised one from the two-year of old. Yeah, you can have it if you'd like. All right? Thank you. All right, let's take five minutes and we'll continue. Claire Rupp. It wasn't bad. Always good. Is that true? I blame it on Koch. I like that. That's enough. Yeah. We know what my friend, so that works. The family people are appointed, we're still in the health of the neighborhood. You know what I'm saying? The other one that worked and anyway, that's not, Jamal Ainsworth.
Hey, everyone? We're gonna do Warren Street again.
And a new business, we have case number Z-1743 Brendan Clary, who permits to convert the existing attic space into a third unit, 16466. Yeah, for the representative here. How are you?
I'm doing very well, thank you. Attorney George Burke. You know, if you ask me if I'm familiar with the area, I went to the Wallaston School, which is right near Safford Street, as all of you know. I went to Quincy High School, University of Mass, ended up with the Celtics and I'm hoping to get home and watch them win tonight.
Hope so, hope so.
The optimism.
So, I'm very familiar with this area and this will not derogate from the public good whatsoever. There's a great many three-family homes in this area, as my good friend here is well aware.
In order, yes.
I was elected for Ward 5 City Council, which included that district at the time. Ward 5 used to go all the way to Adams Street and then they made Ward 5 a smaller area, but nevertheless, I represented Safford Street at the time and then I ran for Council Lodge, I got the largest number of votes in the city at that time than any council I've ever gotten. I've served as acting mayor of this city, I've served as state rep in this city, I've served as district attorney for 12 years in this city and I sent the last man to the electorate chair.
Is that a threat?
That's a threat. Also, just referring to the last hearing you just held, I have lived on Warren Ave for about 75 years, so I'm probably longer on Warren Ave than any person in this room. So, it was very interesting to hear that previous hearing and I know you gentlemen will give your due diligence. So, I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Brendan Clary and his wife. They're longtime residents of this city and they own a two-family home and they're hoping to convert the third floor to another apartment. The area is full of three-family houses down there. So, I'm familiar with that area so I can tell you that there is. And I have brought with me tonight an architect and he's gonna give you a complete description of what the plans are with the parking and the house and what everything is, so I'd like to turn it over to you. His name is also Burke, Tim Burke.
Aye, yes, my name's Tim Burke, I'm the architect for the project. My business address is 142 Berkeley Street in Boston. And I've known Brendan for many years. When we went to visit this property, I was amazed at how big this third-floor space is. There already are two stairs in the building, so the means of egress is quite easy to deal with and the exterior changes are quite limited to just one small dormer to make this into a decent two-bedroom apartment. It's a nice size, it would be 963 square feet, it would be great for a couple or a single person. So, the changes to the outside don't cause any detriment to the neighborhood, we think it's actually an improvement because we're gonna be sprucing up the rest of the house as part of this project. We also have a decent side yard that's allowing us to create three parking spots along the side lot line and then we have a two-car garage that's existing in the rear of the property that we will maintain. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the project.
If you're putting another two bedrooms up there and you only have a stack parking now for two families, where's the third family gonna park?
We have the three spots along the side and then the two in the garage.
So, the guy up top pulls in first, how does he get out?
It's a parallel parking, so you could pull out and...
Double wide.
Yes, double wide.
That's not the other names on this picture. If you're three spots, how do you get by 16 feet actually?
Yeah, we have...
Like seven feet?
It's more than 16 except at that one bay window there.
Correct, but at that, you get seven feet to get half off.
Well, it's usually about eight feet per, so it's eight feet for the parking spot and eight feet for the driving lane, which it's, I wish we had more space, but it will work, yes.
I'd like Brendan to say if you was...
Yes.
Go ahead.
In front of the garage, is there some room to put a car there if we had some?
Well, I need enough room to get the car out of the garage, so it would be tight there, yes.
Okay, so that would be kind of like a stacked parking, like park in front of the garage?
Yeah, you could do that for a visitor, could pull in and park there if they were there for dinner or something like that.
Something like that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to call on Brendan Clary to say a few words on Brendan.
But one thing was my driveway and I don't know who falls this there, it was that way and I bought, if you measure from the bay window to the chain link fence, I have 17 feet nine inches. Now, on the certified plot length, it says, I think, 16 feet, but that, you know, I don't know if I'm foot over in the other guy's feet, you know, so, but that is...
That's where you put a centimeter.
I measured it.
Right.
And that's the way it's been, I bought the house in 84 and it was that way and the man next door, he's never said to me, oh, you're a foot over in my property and I want you to go back, you know, move back and I don't know if that's a possibility down the way, but we presume that it's not because most people, you know, two and three families, you know, as long as they're not really too, too caught in the finer details as long as they, they have their own, you know, driveway and they have their own footprint garage and stuff, on their own property, which will be on the 168, 170 side.
What do you do with that garage now?
What do I do with it now? Well, I'd be honest, I'm a contractor, I've been a contractor, retired last year, so...
Is there stuff in there?
There is some stuff in there, but it will be, we're gonna take down the garage and rebuild it, really on the same footprint because it is in bad shape. You know, it's just so, we want to, there was a big tree growing at that and the roots heaved the garage and kind of threw it forward a little bit and it's, and it's snowed if you're...
How are you gonna assign these spots? Five spots, where are we gonna assign them?
Where are we gonna assign them or find them?
Assign them, assign them to your tenants.
I guess we may work out that we would, you know, paint lines there and put one, two, three and then when the person will dig the apartment, you know, I think we can work together and sort that out.
But a two-bedroom, I mean, I, really, when I read this, I really thought you were putting a one-bedroom up there, you know, someone wants to live there, a little one-bedroom unit, two-bedroom dormers, I mean, it's like, there's no parking, it really is. If you're putting a two-bedroom unit on top of something that's, you can't even get down, at 3 o'clock, you're not even gonna go back to Boston if you're coming to Quincy because there's just no way to get here. This is why, really, because we're adding, adding, adding. At one point, we gotta say, where does it stop? Where does it stop and there's no place to park?
I'll tell you, sir, I'm running...
I know, I know and I feel it, I really do.
I would like to go to Safford Street, do any day and night of the day, there are very few contractors on Safford Street. I know if you're here, there's a lot of traffic on Safford Street, but there's not, sir.
No, I didn't say that. I'm just saying, you get here, now you got another unit in there.
The one advantage we do have is it's quite close to the T Station, it's an easy walk.
Oh, good, but everyone does that. There must be better... This is my question, this is just my question. All right. Any other questions, the applicants? So, Brian?
The question I have, the roof line, the roof is staying, it's high, yes, excuse me, the height it is.
We're not changing the ridge height or the shape of the roof.
The main thing is two dormers, one on each side.
Yes.
And how big is the dormers? A third of the roof?
It's just that center section where the bay is on the south side.
That's okay, just approximate.
The one on the south side is approximately 14 feet and the one on the other side is approximately 18 feet on the north side.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Have you thought about knocking the garage down or making more parking?
With that, I mean, I don't...
Better was a condition we'd go in.
Thank you. You can have a seat. If anyone wants to speak in favor, the folks there, you can have a seat, Mr. Burke.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm in the valley across the street, 167 Safford, I'm in favor of the project because it never causes any trouble there and the parking is never a problem there, so I'm in favor of it.
Okay. So, anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call is part of the hearing close. No response?
Yes, we have a letter from DPW. We review some of the above referenced projects, our comments are as follows. One, specify how much the purpose area will be increased in review to that development. Two, provide plans showing the existing site conditions, layout of utility, grading, drainage and construction details. Three, provide dimensions and grade for the heating area and all driveway entrances. Four, we do not believe the width 16.1 feet is enough for the parking space and traffic aisle, so is that common we have? One, add further information required, please advise, and that's for the DPW.
If anyone opposed to run the side, step forward, state your name and address for the record, please, can you?
My name is Josephine Nichols and I have a two-family on the corner of Hobart and Safford. And in reference to parking, I've shoveled his tenants out on the street, I've never seen him in a driveway. I beg to differ with that. I've never seen him.
Excuse me, can you read that, please?
Yeah, um, he put parking in the street because I helped shovel one of his tenants out one time. So, the street is a disaster where parking...
Hey, whoa, 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 whoa. You sit up front and listen.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're fine, man. Right.
The street is really jammed with cars and what I wanted to say, I'd like to know when you see three families within a three-block distance on Safford Street, they're on, they're on Nardley and you can drive down and look. Further down near the school, there's multiple families, but not in our area. Now, I've lived there since 1950 and there are five houses, as this is, with three stories and the second floor people have that third-story area. It usually has a couple of rooms, a foyer or a bathroom. I've been in, I think I've been in three of them, in his included. So, I don't know what he's talking about. As far as parking, the trash park can't even get down to the street, they got to back down, go around the block and back down to get the trash a lot of times and some people don't even get their trash picked up. That's a big problem. Another problem that I see is that we have five houses like that. You let him do it, we're gonna have four others that are gonna wanna do it too and we just can't take, the sewers backed up in the past couple of years, we have trash problems, parking problems, I don't know where they're coming from, but I live there, I see it and I really strongly oppose that. We have some serious issues because he's got two houses across, I've got two across from me like his with the third stories, they have 10,000 people living in there, just everybody there, but I don't know if they're legal third floors, I don't know, but they have a lot of people living in there.
You can call, you can call the DPW down there, call Mr. Duca, he can tell you what's listed on there for a bonus.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't care, but you know, it is a parking problem, I end up with trucks parking in my house all the time and people suddenly see their apartments, I found out, that I didn't realize because one gal tried to rent my apartment and she says, oh, well, we're subleasing from that house there that has a third-story apartment that I don't think is legal parking. So, that's what people do. I don't think landlords are tuned enough to what was on in their houses, but it's pretty scary. And like I say, there's several of us and as far as the gal that's beside him, she has a very small two-family and he's gonna block her right out. I'm on the next house on the corner, but the house beside me has a very small two-family and if he puts dormers on, she's gonna look like that house down in Atlantic City between these tall buildings. And his driveway is not very wide, his garage doesn't have any doors on it, it needs to be torn down, whether he will or not, I don't know, but I see it as a major issue.
Damon, anyone else opposed to run the side? Step forward, state your name and address for the record.
Name's John Gassenway, 71 Hobart Street.
Possibly.
Gassenway, Hobart, Safford, right on the corner. I don't know what the zoning is there, but I know there's no three-story houses around, they're three stories high, the one across the street, as she said, there's three in the driveway and seven around the house every night, two across the street parked there, so it's like maybe 10 or 12 cars for one apartment building, I don't know who lives there, but it's like that all the way down Safford, both sides, when you go down Safford at night, both sides all the way down, you can barely get by and I've had the same issues. In front of my house, I got two spots, me and my wife park every night and I've had to go out there and shoot people off saying, my wife went to the store, she'll be back, you can't park there, thank you very much, you know, and we sometimes put a cone out there to stop it, which is illegal, you're not supposed to do that, but the point is, that's how bad the neighborhood's been getting. I've been there six years and I've seen it getting worse and worse since I got there. I got a solid granite foundation, I'd love to build three stories if I could, you know, so if it happens in the neighborhood, maybe it's something I should consider too.
Thank you. Anyone else opposed to run the side? Second call, third call, call is part of the hearing close. I just think it's, I'm talking right, it's just, it's just hot right? I can't, I can't. Street place or parking?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think that I could live with a one-bedroom up there, that was more possible, have a one-bedroom instead of a two-bedroom up there, I might be more happy if I put this whole thing, then we have at least a parking space per bedroom. That would, that would make me feel a lot happier, though I've been familiar with that neighborhood since 1983 and I've looked it down, that name over and back and forth. So, I know parking is horrible, it's been horrible since then, it's gonna be horrible forever.
What about the...
No, 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 no. Part of the hearing go. That's all, yeah. Funny chance from you here to talk, sit down. So, Brian?
Yes, again, the parking's always an issue, if we could resolve the parking, but I don't know if we can resolve it, although we're two-two bedroom, we're in a affair. But space as it is, I'll be going off.
Yeah, same and no one even talked about the snow and where that's gonna go and how much space that's gonna take up to the side of the house and the driveway, the pass-through is just very, very difficult, so as is, I'm not in favor of that.
I'm not in favor of any additional units up there, one or two of them.
Burke, what I'm gonna do is give you an offer to withdraw without prejudice if you don't have the votes. Would you like to do that?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Another number, I've lost my place already. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Forty-three.
Z-17, Z-17-43 Brendan Clary, for a various, very existing attic space preferred, you have a preference on 164, 166 Safford Street in Quincy, I'd make a motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second. On the motion, CNN on favor? Aye. Close. Come on. Regarding tonight's agenda, case number Z-1744 Hillary Dish, who permits to construct a second level addition on mudrooms on a single-family house, seven Landstall Street. It's the applicant and their representative here.
So, I, all we are doing on the house is actually finishing off the second floor, it's already one and a half story car, but from the back, because the land goes down, we have a walkout basement, so from the back it looks like it's three stories, but it's not, so we're not adding any extra height. I think if anything, it might be less than a foot, the ground.
It looks like a nice plan, what you have. So, you're going just from really that back section, correct?
Yes.
All right. You're from the second floor in the back, okay, nothing high, is this the...
It's actually even higher than going in there, so it's really not, we're just kinda finishing it up, so.
Right, put the walkway up.
Yeah.
Any questions? Yeah, okay.
You're gonna be all architect, okay, thank you.
Thank you, you can have a seat. If anyone wants to speak in favor, speak in favor. First call, second call, third call closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, we reviewed the above referenced project and have no comments. If there anyone opposed to run the side, opposed to run the side, first call, second call, third call closed. I think it's a nice project, I think it's pretty nice and pretty, I'll be voting in favor.
I live in the Bay, likewise.
Great looking play, I'm in favor.
In favor. You have a motion?
Yes, it matters Z-17-44 Hillary Dish, who permits to construct a second level addition in... in mudroom on the existing single family home on Princess Number Seven Lansdale Street. I make a motion for a variance.
On the motion, CNN all in favor. I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jury in the hall.
Thank you.
That it, John? Slap, go. Why do you want to speak in favor?
Sorry for that.
Yeah. Come on in. Rather than tonight's agenda, case number Z seventeen forty-six. Binlam for various finding to construct additional living space in Princess Number Five Main Street in Quincy. Is he up and their representative here? You have the floor, name and address please.
My name's Ben Lam.
Yep.
Owned by Main Street. And since we bought this house only to, uh, two room, and by the time we don't have kids, now we have two kids, and then we try to additional for special living space. And also ask family up in Quincy, and we love our family.
You've been here 14 years?
Yes.
And you're gonna stay in that home, you're gonna free time?
Yeah.
Not really, you guys, okay, a lot of people sometimes go home and then take off. The way you're going is small from one and a half to two and a half, correct? Are you moving the? You go from a two bedroom to a four bedroom or three?
Uh, four.
Four. Any questions for the applicant right now?
I have none.
They got one on the first floor and three on the second?
Is the, are you, are you gonna put a bedroom in the basement this time?
Actually, it's not a basement, now we have two rooms down here, like a branch.
Okay, so you, you have?
What in your ground floor?
Yeah, it's, it's far out of the, far out of the.
Walkway in the back, yeah.
Oh, okay, I see. It did look like there was.
So that's like, that's like a guest bedroom when someone comes over, is that what that is? And it don't have a separate entrance? You have to come upstairs to go down, you have to go downstairs, correct?
Uh, we have upstairs, we have a, a floor upstairs.
And you got one in the back?
Yeah, one in the back.
It's almost like a park, you could lock that right off. What's upstairs? Is this all in common with that?
Yeah, upstairs only with the, uh, living, living room and kitchen and a bathroom.
You're dying. Now, one, one of that stair coming up?
It's the, uh, the front door.
I don't, I don't. I don't see it on the, on the first floor. Where's that staircase coming up? See this staircase here? Coming up, right? You come up the front? Where is it on the next page? Where's the staircase?
This is the original one.
That's the original?
Yeah.
So there's one more here?
Yeah.
I got it now, alright, I can. There you go, alright, alright. I got it, it's on the next page. Any questions for the applicant? Dan?
Thank you.
You can have a seat. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Speak in favor?
Hi, we're the next door neighbor, it's Lisa Goldstein, Omschilu. We live next door, the address is 25 Union Street. But we're literally about five feet from his property line. And we do support this. The second floor of our house in the back, it's mostly just some bathroom and kitchen, and kitchen in the safety egress, so it, you know, it won't affect the, really the view or anything. And, and it won't be moving towards the property line, and it's staying on the same base, so we have no problem.
Thank you. Thank you very much. For anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Second call, third call, call the pilot hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, they reviewed the project and have no comments. Anyone opposed to run the site? Please step forward, state your name and address.
John Russo, 11 Main Street, I live right next door. Yes. According to, my family's built that house on Main Street since 1920. My father knew the, the original owner at Five Main Street, which was Manteers. This house has a lot of history to it, and there's a lot of history written about it. It was designed by an architect that was very famous, and sold to the Manteer family in 1904. This structure hasn't changed the facade, so I oppose building a second floor of it since it was subdivided in 1947, but it was sold in 1990 as a, a, a store, and then it was converted to a single family home. Right now, there's two families living in this house at Five Main Street.
Sure.
Not one. And what they did was, I, I've gone to the, the billing board and talked to Jim Anderson, and he has a, a very big concern about adding to the second floor, neglecting the history to it. And, and this was a quote that he, he stated, that in the, in the plans that you have, there's a spiral staircase they wanna remove. He thinks that if they remove the spiral staircase, then the bottom is self-contained, it has plumbing and everything, and the back door can be used as an egress, and the, and the top stairs can be locked, and you can have two separate apartments. Now, the, I went to the engineering board and talked to Gary, Joe Gordino. He gave me an updated property plan, and it shows only two parking spaces asphalted. There is nine parking spaces asphalted. They removed the retaining wall and asphalted at least 50 feet from Main Street down to their backyard. The code enforcer, Ken Burke, did a Google search, and he looked, and you could see there's a possible flooding. I'm four feet higher than you.
Okay.
So I don't have that problem, but you can see by the Google Maps that the water is pooling there. And another thing is, when it was sold as the orig, to the original owner, Lenny Peacock, in 1990s, and he, he was a contractor, he built it as a single family home for himself. When he sold it to this family, the, the city, uh, there was a public easement of four feet from my property out. So the lady that sold the original property can leave. They fenced it in, it's completely blocked off. And when they bought it, they put a telephone pole, electrical pole, and a cable pole right next to my living room window, right on the driveway side. So if I wanna go and fix my fence, I can't because it's, the public easement is gone because he blocked it off. So I'm more concerned that they build another floor, it's gonna cause another family to live there if they sell it, because it's, it's gonna be easy to convert. Now, the original owner, Peacock, built an illegal debt, which the city never had a permit for, and they just let it slide. Under that debt, they built, these people built a room underneath, a living area, which is not in plans. So the building code is concerned that more people are gonna be living there, or they sell it, they could be, you know, like a two family, but also.
They've been living there 14 years.
Yes, but there's two families living in it, not one.
According to you.
Well, I, I see her every day.
You can have three families living in a single family home.
Right, I understand, but the thing is, they didn't get a permit to, to asphalt it and remove the retaining wall, and there's no plans for it, they, they blocked the easement, so they're doing a lot of things without the proper channel. It's, it's historical.
Oh, it's not.
If, well.
It's not here.
Well. It's a historical district, it is. Five Main Street and Baxter Street is a historical district. It's, I've got all the paperwork here for it, if you want, I can print it all out.
No, it's fine, I can find out.
Okay. If you wanna go to the Thomas Crane Public Library dot org, it's there.
That is before.
Okay. But there's other concerns that, excuse me. Well, the only, the only thing is, I, I, I propose that, you know, to, you know, postpone any kind of approval until all the concerns are met, because the, the code enforcer, Ken Burke, is concerned about the war. He mentioned it, I don't know exactly the war or maybe.
We'll, we'll talk later.
And like I said, the building inspector too is concerned that if they remove the, well, who's the?
He's the boss.
Right, okay.
He knows what everyone's doing in that building.
Ironically, Jim said today he wasn't gonna come, because at first he was gonna come, and also Brett Prole was gonna come and oppose it too. But I'm glad he's here, because Jim told me that if they do remove, if they do get approved and have the second floor added, and, and they keep the spiral staircase, or they remove the spiral staircase, it, it's going to leave the bottom self-contained, and, and that's what, that's his most concern, that it's gonna happen.
Anyone in any town can do that, it's illegal, it's illegal. You could do that in your home, I could do that in my home. Anyone could do that.
Right.
Build a bedroom, have whatever they have, so they can have five cats in their house.
Right.
And then make them illegal. The word is illegal. So it has to be in common, it has to be open.
Right.
I mean, you could go to anyone's house, and they could put in a door.
Right.
And they got access in the back to walkout basement, they could make it illegal, but it's illegal.
Right.
And if something happens, those people, he dies, they go to prison for the rest of their life.
Because I've been in that house 65 years, and I've been in that store, Mr. Manteers.
But your, your, your concern right now is two families are living there, and you don't want.
A second floor.
You just don't want two families.
No, but I don't also want to change the, the structure.
The history.
The skyline, and, and my view, because, and this might seem insignificant.
Your view?
Well, I'll tell you why it's insignificant.
It is, if you didn't buy that side of the property.
When the city has fireworks, I can actually see them from my living room.
I used to be able to see the ocean, and I lived to be on such a great, and I left the guy build his house in front of me because he has a ranch.
I have a view of, of this church from my upstairs.
But that's, that's selfish, that's, you don't own his property. Your wife's property, and then you wouldn't have had his family.
I understand.
That's what you should have had.
But the concern is that, history, concern is that all that pavement and, and water.
That will be dealt with, that will be dealt with.
And, and the public easement, or the easement, which the.
Russo, I got, I got it.
You got it.
I got everything you need, man.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed to run the site, before I ask the head of inspection service, Mr. Speaker? Mr. Duca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen's correct, my concern is too that the bottom part of this building lends itself to be an independent unit, so I would ask the board if they're gonna consider approving this, that the stairway be opened and bonded, with no door, leading up to a gate. The good news is.
Pick up the truck.
Uh, that, that will be up to the board, whatever you see fit. But the concern is being an independent unit, so whatever the board sees, deems appropriate. And we will be there to legalize. The good news is, it's gonna do a lot of work, so we'll be there for a lot of inspections and making sure that everything meets the building code.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duca. Is there anyone else opposed to run the site? Call the pilot hearing closed. You know what, let's, let's, what we're gonna do is vote on it. Come back in two weeks, I wanna find out about this stuff. I wanna go back to the pavement and all that, so see what's going on. Given him something tonight, maybe he shouldn't be, this is what's going on.
I'd like to talk about the historical aspect of that.
Yeah, exactly, and I'll check on that. If no is checked in this, usually the city, if it knows that law, they usually check that to make sure that's right, that it's historic, for it to take.
I can guarantee you that that does not show up on any historic district on our.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, because you would check, right? Because that's how.
Well, it's just that the two historic districts we have, I mean.
No, but then a building itself.
Well, maybe on the National Register of Historic Places, that's a little different.
Yeah.
But it doesn't, it's not a historic district.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? What if the local historic people, did they have any sale or something like that?
Not to my home. It's a whole other historic, historic district. I think what happens when you run the National Register, if you're, if your house meets all the guidelines, you can get money and help with restoring it, but if it, if it's been altered, it's just, you're just on the, on the register.
Then they give me money to report back.
Right, yeah.
So if we could do that.
Verify the information you have, right? Can you supply that though?
Yeah, I can supply it.
Yeah.
Tell people to bring it and I'll supply it.
Let me just, do you have, just email?
I have it on my phone, if I, you want me to text it to you, you can read it.
Sure. Sure. That's what I mean, I give you my, my two minutes. Do you have a motion, just? Private email?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have it, oh my God, I'm dying.
He's gonna give it to me anyway, after.
You wouldn't probably, I think you have it anyway, right? I called you for your fault. Give you my number, yeah, I sent an email to you. Shall we give him two weeks?
Yeah. Do you have a motion please?
Okay, when two weeks is?
June 13.
Still, still June 13?
We'll be here till 2:00 AM on the 13th.
Yeah, I know.
Mr. Chairman, a matter number Z seventeen forty-six. Binlam for a variance finding to construct additional living space on Princess Number Five Main Street, I make a motion to continue the hearing until June 13th.
Seconds. On the motion, CNN all in favor? I oppose. Two weeks. Alright? We gotta find out about your pavement in the back and all the stuff people saying. And anyway, one more case we've got here, Z seventeen forty-seven. Mr. Chairman, Jim, for various to replace the front stairs on an L-shaped staircase leading to the driveway, convert to porch with preseason porch on Princess 14 Phillips Street. Yep, and their representative here.
Hi, I'm Louie Chan.
Speak up? Don't get nervous, we're all good people, you know, it's not like, but I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm here to speak for my dad.
Okay.
So we're replacing the stairs to.
Name and address.
Fort Phillips.
Name?
Louie, Louie Chan.
Okay. Replacing the front stairs?
Yes.
And you wanna put an L sweep, come down and go into the park, to the driveway, correct?
Yes.
Nothing else is gonna change up there, it's just gonna come up to the side, right? Any last, yeah, what are we doing with that porch?
Uh, because during the winter, especially during, if the porch is not covered, I mean, this, I mean, this.
And how you gonna enclose it? What are you, what are you gonna put on there?
Well, no, we're constructing it to like cover the wall, cover all sides.
So that was, it's, that had nothing, there's nothing, just, just an overhang now.
Well, it's like covering a wall.
But, but it's an overhang, right?
Yes.
So what are you putting, windows in there?
Yes, we do.
And all that beautiful woodwork is gonna close in. Take it out. All that gorgeous woodwork that's on that porch, it's so pretty.
Well, because during the winter, it gets very slippery, and it's slippery, so.
Well, we all do, we all do, we have porches that look nice. You use them in summer or eight months, whatever you do, but I know you want a little room to get out of the, so the cold air don't blow in, I get that, it really do. It's just a shame, look at the house beside you, probably had the same beautiful porch, look what they did. Who owned it with that, I don't know. We had someone here doing it all on their own. The quality of woodwork made it look like something in the back of. Made it look like something in the back of Dorchester, that just, yeah, I'll say it.
Hey.
Hey. But again, you man, it destroyed the house, destroyed the house, and it's like a beautiful, beautiful, a cold, cold, cold house. This is what I, I love woodwork. You know, there's other ways you can do it, you can screen that in, you can leave all that woodwork and still make it look pretty. You know what I mean? If you have, needs a woodwork here, make.
Well, the main reason is just to cover all the rains and the snows, because we do put something under, the upstairs is.
What?
Like the shoveling or the, uh, like the snow, like the.
Lawnmower?
Yeah.
And lawn mowers?
Well, we do put other tools over it, so.
What tools?
Any tools, like for, um, or supposed to those, and then the rains.
You mean, yeah, oh, stuff you use in the yard?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then all leaks.
Any, any, any questions here except for me?
I go, I go back.
I have, I have no.
I go back, you.
I have no questions. The question is, I don't have a question. I have to say to my own question.
Speak it.
Yeah?
Yeah, yeah, not yet.
Uh, I don't, of course.
No questions.
Any comments? Are all the closing in a porch?
Oh, I hate it. Porch is gorgeous.
I know, I know. Just change the whole neighborhood.
I don't know the process of doing, you know, the inservice and screens.
I understand, I understand you want to get stuff up.
Perhaps if we had a more professional rendering, it would be, it would.
Yeah. No, no, because you can do it, you can do it tastefully, you really can, you can put like, you can put pulled-down windows that still gonna be, you know, do something with the floor, so water don't keep pouring on and stuff underneath, I get that part, but when they close it in like that, the next move is open it up, you know where it is. And it's lit, it just happens, it's closed there.
How about we get on the stairs side open?
You mean, that, that, that's like what you're saying, and, and enclose half of it. But the staircase is going right into that door, the doors on that side.
The doors on the side? On the side of the house?
No, I think it's right in the, it's right, because you walk.
So you're gonna replace the stairs where they are, you're just gonna turn them?
Turn them. So when you walk in, you see that? I'm only just out of the house, I think, right, I'm right. Oh, it is, it's not the other side. Oh, you're right. No, you're not.
No, it's the center, it's the other one.
Yeah, just.
No, it's on the left side. You walk right into the door.
Uh, John, it's on the front, you walk up and you bang right through the, to the door.
Yeah. The door's right there. Isn't that the door?
Yeah, but yeah, they moved it right.
Yeah, right, yeah, it moved.
They moved it to the center section of the porch.
The closing.
No, no, because the inside door is on the left.
Yeah.
And they cover that, they still got the inside door on the left. So the way that is, instead of coming in the middle, all that way out. I know what you're saying.
No.
I get it. Yeah, I know what you mean. Come about the middle and all. And that would be fine, but close one half of it? Yeah, a little trouble, with that house inside. Lawn mower left, fourth and fourth street, it's just, just change the character. There's a way to do this, you know what, I'm not gonna do it, I'm just gonna say it myself. So, if you want to get an architect to make a nice drawing or something real tasteful, personally, I'm not gonna call for it, and I don't know who else is gonna call for it. I have nothing but problems about people closing in porches and they look lousy, it just destroys the, the house. There's a way to do it tastefully and make it really nice. Make that woodwork even shell, but the inside of the windows and. I'm just, why don't we, why don't we give them time, would you like an architect?
Wait, we did, because we.
No, 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 I know, we're gonna, I'm the same. Do you want an architect, do, you know what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Make it tasteful, make it look like.
Now, where the house.
It looks like.
Yeah, make them look like it in the door. Alright, we'll get, we'll get right back to you, you can have a seat. Is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor? You guys can sit down. First call, second call? Third call, closed, I have a letter here from DPW, they have no comment. Anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call, second call, third call, closed. You guys want to get an architect to make this tasteful, not just the way it is, that drawing is not, I don't know what it is. I don't know what that is, it's like, I don't know what you're putting on the, putting on the walls, I don't know what the windows are, I don't know, you know what? You sketched it, and you could, it could be built like that, and it would be great.
Did we shop for a pass down this wall with two doors down? And he came back with a nice design?
Right.
Yeah, it means.
I think it was a guy going with doors down.
It's easy to make a nice set of drawings that's really nice, and make them really tasteful, and leave some of that nice wood there that's there. Alright, due to July, uh, just, we're just gonna move it, July, uh, twenty seventh. How's that?
July twenty fifth would be better.
Huh?
Twenty fifth would be better.
Twenty fifth, how's that, July twenty seventh.
Oh, July twenty seventh. That's, yeah.
July twenty seventh, twenty fifth, there you go, July twenty fifth.
I know, I want to do that.
Give him a false hope, I'm sorry.
Oh, that could be, but if, and then it gives him a, if he wants to do it.
Do they agree?
Yeah, well, it doesn't matter, it's, uh, a future, right? And one sort of law, not that piece of cardboard, I don't know.
Yes, sir.
No, we'll, look at that, if you vote for that, no, no. Thank you.
I wouldn't accept that.
I know, exactly. You beat the dead horse.
Mr. Chairman, a matter number Z seventeen dash forty seven. You're win Chen for a, for a variance to replace the front stairs with an L-shaped staircase leading from the driveway and to convert the porch to a three-season porch on premise number fourteen Phillips Street. Make a motion to continue the hearing till, uh, July twenty fifth. Sorry.
A motion, seeing that all in favor?
I.
Close.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to.
You want to steal that?
Second.
July twenty fifth, we're gonna have you back.
All favor? I have closed.
With the new plan, but have that in to me two weeks before then, or a month before then, or Monday.